Okay, thank you everybody for attending. Tonight is the regular monthly meeting of the Clinton Pineland Wetlands Commission. Uh, the time is seven oh four. Sherri, can you might call in longer tonight?
Tanya Alpatello.
Here.
Edward Alvarino.
Here.
Michael Florio.
Here.
Robert LaFrance. Bertrand Schmidt.
Here.
Brian Todd as well.
Here.
Scott Harley.
Here.
Lawrence Edwards, uh, email not make it tonight.
Okay. Uh, item agenda number two minutes, so there's two to approve. Do we need, what was the addendum to the minutes?
Uh, that was basically the rest of the applications.
Okay. I only read the dialogue. Do we need to vote on voting?
No. There was the first one.
So we, but you revise these in your then, right?
No, they're two different documents.
Okay. So the first is the minutes from August first, twenty twenty three.
Okay, the most motion approved is.
Running seconds, any discussion? All those voting in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close? Stay? Okay, and then review and approval of the addendum to the minutes dated August first, twenty twenty three.
Motion to approve.
Seconding. And Florio, second, is any discussion? All those voting in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close? Stay? And motion carries. Uh, item number three, discussion, Clinton Public Works Strange Repair Project at eight Jefferson Circle.
Hi, everyone. Uh, I'm talking to you with C H A. I'm your new town engineer. Welcome, welcome. Thank you. So, uh, my first time in firmly quote, so it's my first day. Um, so I spoke with, I spoke with Todd at D E W and he was having a problem with one of the drainage outlets and this is basically at the intersection of Lincoln Road and Jefferson Circle. So Lincoln Road is right down here going to, to the side. Um, and so the actual drainage outfall is on eight Jefferson Circle. Essentially, the, the overall Lincoln Road Jefferson Circle subdivision drains to this point here. Uh, it runs through a series of catch basins and, and pipe networks. The outlet is here on a Jefferson. Uh, so there's a pipe, I forget exactly how long it is. Um, it's probably like seventy-five feet or so A P. Uh, and discharge is here to a channel that goes probably three hundred fifty feet between the outlet and where the actual wetlands are shown on kind of D I S. So essentially, this is an existing fifteen inch concrete pipe. It's quite old. Uh, typically when these pipes were put in, you know, they didn't have rubber gaskets and all this sort of things. It has some of those joints. Uh, this area is very, got a lot of trees in it, a lot of relatively mature trees. The tree roots have gotten into the pipe joints and, and basically grown into the pipe and uh, essentially caught the pipe out. So where this outlet is, is this, is this kind of drainage channel thing and those are not going as wetlands, but you know, my unprofessional soil scientist opinion most likely is wetland. So, uh, one of the reasons that we're here recording tonight, what we're looking to do is we're looking to replace this pipe, basically from the back, the hatch basin to where the existing outlet is now. We're looking to upsize that pipe. Get a drainage study, show that that existing fifteen inch pipe is under capacity. So we're gonna, we're looking to replace it with a twenty-four inch pipe and then also replace the outlet protection at the existing outlet. And the outlet protection would essentially be a scour hole, uh, can I get D O T scour hole? If people are familiar with that, it's kind of like the old plugs can be able to take that thing to reduce the velocity of the water coming out of the end of the pipe. Uh, the existing pipe is within town drainage easement. It's a twenty foot wide drainage easement and split between ten Jefferson Circle and eight Jefferson Circle. Uh, so it basically split right along the property line here and then takes a uh, odd angle off in this direction. Um. So it's kind of sort of the outlet is possibly within the easement, possibly not. Um, yeah, these locations are approximate, hasn't been surveyed. And so like I said, we're looking to replace the pipe, replace the outlet protection. In order to do this, uh, we would use sedimentation road controls. Uh, we are gonna need a stockpile area because there is gonna be some tree clearing, uh, and some excavation. However, we're gonna try and, we're looking to limit the tree clearing to the, the most minimal extent possible. And I, I showed that stockpile area a little bit further back in Jefferson Circle so that we can maintain some of these trees that kind of surround Jefferson Circle. Uh, and then when this area is restored, this, this area wouldn't be allowed to grow back. We have a tracking pad, so it prevents sediment from going on in Jefferson Circle and we have the build use of silvance sediment barrier surrounding the, the cleared area and then also, you know, some check, check PM type, uh, silvances as the, you run along much to the lead of the pipe. Uh, we're calling for this area to be clear, that the only areas stumped would be the area where we're gonna have to actually excavate the pipe. So, uh, we're not really trying to identify and run the disturbance and that sort of thing in that area. Pretty much covers it. So, you know, kind of the questionable wetland area along this channel, um, you know, we thought it would be good to come before you post.
So is it your plan to get wetlands delineated with the wetlands oil side?
It is to not delineate wetlands. Um, you know, this would be a repair, maintenance, D W project. Um, you know, it is an existing pipe, it's an existing outfall that currently is not functioning, uh, and is causing flooding in Jefferson Circle.
You know where the pipe, that pipe was initially installed?
I believe it was done when, uh, these properties or this subdivision was created. And I don't know that is exactly what you had, you know, this part, um.
Do you know if they're natural wetlands or made man from, from war floor?
I think they were made man from the outfall of the pipe.
That's what happened up in Egypt lane too.
Yeah, especially because, you know, the, the map didn't show any wetlands out here. Those, those map wetlands are, are pretty far away.
Yeah, that's what happened.
What type of pipe are you using? Is it H G P E? Right?
So our regulations are pretty clear. Any kind of excavation disposal within a hundred feet of that wetlands would require a permit. But I think if you're asking if you need a permit, I would say yes. I think that is pretty clear.
Yeah.
Um, but if you're within fifty to a hundred feet, that can just be done by our wetlands enforcement officer. Um, inside fifty is she typically kicks it to us.
Okay.
So I think at least what I would ask for is the wetland soil scientist. If it isn't wetlands and you're outside a hundred feet, you don't need a permit. But I, I understand you're trying to, I guess, consider it maintenance, but to me, as soon as you're kind of upsizing a pipe to the project, maintenance, I would consider like leaving it.
This is true of, 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 your respect, um. When we did Egypt in, was it Calhoun? Um, and people say that it was wetland. It was actually wrong. We follow it. It was manmade from the bus street that flowed over and created wetlands. So if they're manmade, what is the, is it, is it still the same?
Yes, you're, they're considered, it's one of changes soil type.
Right.
Like so over time, a manmade channel can burn wetlands. So I guess the concern is that if this pipe is there existing and by virtue of the beam damage and sort of poorly constructed over time.
Right.
That, that has created wetlands and then changing it to something that no longer does that. I think we just take that into consideration.
Yeah.
Right. It's, yeah, it was not, if the pipe wasn't there, it was all wetland dirt. So kind of a different thing, which it, it was, was manmade.
What makes you think it's wet? Does it just?
Uh, I think it's because it is wet enough throughout the year that, uh, you probably have hydrosoil. No, it's, it's a very defined channel. Um, and I think.
It's also work force, like?
I don't think it's a water force, uh, but it's definitely a defined channel.
I chair. Want to schedule a schedule?
Well, we don't need to until there's about a day within the process. But he's asking, does the town need to put in an application for this work?
If you. It's very ambiguous, but it, it seems to me with the consensus is if, if, if it's definitely manmade and it's not um, if it's from the pipe, right?
Yeah.
And I would say no, but if, if you know, if you, you don't know.
Well, I'm not a wetland scientist. And yeah, you get, the only way to tell is if you did define.
Yeah, source. So it doesn't have to be wet, but it's a source, so.
I mean, I think we would, knowing what you're trying to do and how close you are to it and upsizing it, I think it makes sense to have a soil scientist, see if there's wetland soils that would be considered wetlands. And if there's not, and you're outside a hundred feet, you don't. Yeah.
Okay. Um, for certain occasion purposes, if it's found that the, that hydro soils exists between fifty and a hundred feet to wetlands, is that something that kind of can
I think, yes, yeah.
It doesn't make any sense on that.
Yep, yep.
Anything inside fifty feet, I mean, if it's forty-nine feet, I think, or no, even if it is forty-nine feet.
Forty-one, this is really the question.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah. Are you prepared with that?
Yeah, I think so. Uh, do I do I get together with wetlands agent? Or do you want to have Todd and I get a special soil scientist?
What, what did you have? Get a, you know, definitive answer about the
Yeah, I guess.
Spoils, sorry.
Could make your life a lot easier.
Yeah. And these have to go crazy. We, we, could, we, Todd knows football, so he just haven't look at it.
Sounds good.
Yeah, Matt, and it's, it's not like, you know, we're asking for crazy application.
Yeah, I'm not asking.
Your plan probably that you have is probably good enough, but just the, the town should go through the same process as any resident.
All right, sounds good. Any other questions? Anything like that?
No, you can welcome for it. So we'll see if playing zoning meetings and.
Possibly, possibly. Okay. All right.
Happy first day.
Thank you.
All right, item agenda number five. So this is gonna be the public hearing for I W C twenty-three dash four. It's gonna be fifty-six West Shore Drive, Jensen Jarra is the applicant and owner. Application for regular activities within zero to a hundred feet of the inland wetlands or water force. For various items, stone retaining wall, um, gravel wall, uh, stone steps, uh, dock, pressure treated wood, for a deck, gravel parking area, stone paper patio, two stone walls. So a lot going inside the hundred foot review zone. Uh, setters map fourteen, block four, lot fourteen, zone R thirty. Um, and I guess I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Excellent. Let's get them. Receive the applications.
Oh, sorry, item agenda four, what kind of, is there any applications to receive?
No.
Yeah, all right.
Got triggered, happy. I wanted to get to this public hearing. Um, so I'll take a motion.
I think motion to receive is true.
Or no, hold on, hold on.
And then we can open up the public hearing.
This, this application was previously received. Um, you've had a sidewalk on it and now because of the determination of significant activity and the petition received, the vote would be to open the public hearing, have the applicant do the presentation and then, um, open up a comment room chair.
Yeah, legal notice of this, uh, legal notice of public hearing, that's.
Before opening or as long as we have, but.
You should do it first.
Okay, ready?
Will you be it?
Well, yeah, good for it.
Your secretary.
Who is the secretary? You?
Dave.
Yes, do you judge?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, legal notice, public hearing, um, town of Clinton Pineland Wetlands Commission, a whole public hearing on Tuesday, September fifth, twenty twenty-three, seventy AM. Rose Room, William Stanton Andrews Memorial Town Hall, before East Main Street, Clinton, Connecticut, to consider the following. I W C twenty-three dash four, fifty-six, West Shore Drive, Jensen Jarra, applicant and owner. Application for regulated activities within zero, ten, one hundred feet of inland wetlands or a water core. Stone retaining wall and steps, dock, deck posts, placement of gravel, stone paper patio and stone walls. Assessors map fourteen, block four, lot fourteen, zone R thirty. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard and written communication received, the application and accompanying maps and correspondence are available to public inspection in the land use office of the town hall. Dated at Clinton, Connecticut, the second day of August twenty twenty-three, Scott Harley chaired Clinton Pineland Wetlands Commission. Email to the harbor news appear two times on Thursday, August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three and Thursday, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing, I W C twenty-three dash four.
Second. Any discussion? Those voting in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close? Staying? Okay. Public hearing is open. Um, so thank you, everybody. We're gonna move on to the public hearing for this application. Um, the way that we'll run it tonight is we'll give the applicant, um, time to make their presentation. Uh, walk the I W C. We can, you have any questions on, um, you know, where things go and what, but I would say for the commission to hold your questions to the end, um, we'll give the applicant time to present. We'll move to the public portion. So I'll ask for those voting in favor or want to speak in favor of the applicant or application first. Then those that are neutral on the application and then those are against the application. So in that order. Um, and if you could try to keep your comments to about three minutes, go over that, okay? Um, but try to keep your discussion solely on the wetlands. So our purview tonight is just on wetlands and the work that the applicant is doing, um, adjacent to it versus our regulations. And then we'll close with questions from the. Our chance to ask. Right?
Okay. Awesome. Thank you very much. Uh, good evening. I'm Bob, I'm a professional engineer, licensed slant sprayer from Don Engineering. And I'm here on behalf of Johnson, uh, Jarra, regarding his property of fifty-six, uh, West Shore Drive, uh, older lake. And, um, the subject property is a, uh, four thousand six hundred and, um, fifty-eight square foot, uh, lot, uh, point, uh, one, one acres. And we are proposing to, um, improve the site by placing a, I'll start on the, uh, south side. Starting on the, uh, south side, which is the, um, older lake, um, um, side. We're proposing a, an eight by eight, uh, float, um, to be installed. Uh, then on the shoreline, we're proposing a retaining wall with, um, five foot wide steps. Going, uh, to the water's edge. And we're proposing three foot wide steps from an existing, uh, concrete wall and also, uh, that go down to the, uh, lower level. When I say lower level, uh, it's about a three foot, uh, difference. The retaining wall will be about, uh, three feet high. I have a detail that, uh, you don't have to scroll up to that yet. Um, we're proposing a gravel surface, um, below the deck from the, uh, um, property line over to the, uh, building. Um, on the sidewalk, you notice that there's a gravel surface and, um, with a gravel, uh, speed gravel bank. Uh, the retaining wall is taking care of the gravel bank and stabilizing it. And then the stone, um, will stabilize the, um, the earth that you saw there, um, at the sidewalk, walked through the house, went through the stairs on the, on the deck. Um, then on the upper side, a roadside. Um, we're proposing a sixteen by nineteen, uh, paper patio. Um, two, uh, light posts and they propose a twenty-five by thirty foot, uh, gravel parking area. Um, with two, uh, stone walls, um, low profile eighteen inch high, stone walls that, uh, define the um, traffic area coming into the side. Uh, the essentially the fire lot is in the upper, um, review area. We've got the weapons flag, which is essentially the edge of the, um, over light. Uh, we have a flag by Richard Snarsky and, uh, we did, um, the top graphic survey and for of the site. Uh, boss, I'm only to the top of the survey, um, prior to our involvement. And, um, the building is, uh, existing, uh, it's existing. Um, it's supported by a host, if you scroll down. Nowadays, we've been signed up. Throw now over the lake, photograph super close if, uh, what we are proposing. You can see large boulders on the left side. Um, and a stone retaining wall running across the face in between the boulders. It looks like they extend, but it was a nice calm day and the reflection was shown. Um, and the steps going up to the side. Uh, there was a conversation at the last meeting um, regarding whether or not this is a significant activity. Uh, it was determined, um, that, um, if the, uh, rock wall is into the boulders, that it was a significant activity. We are not, uh, proposing to pin, uh, the wall, uh, to the boulders. We don't have to, it's a, a wall. Uh, it is, um, supported by, uh, essentially the mortar and the friction that, um, gets placed on the on the stone and will build up around the stone. The material that we are using will be a native stone and blend into the existing, uh, boulders that you see. And it will allow us, uh, with the size of the, uh, stone, uh, to do the work by hand and lay the stone uh, with, uh, mortar, mortar and stone, uh, building up to retain the, uh, three foot high bank. Uh, the, the gray that you see in the back is a is an attempt to graphically show the, uh, the gravel that will be placed under the deck to, uh, stabilize the area. The float itself will be placed um, in front of the, um, the steps and will be tethered, uh, to the shore, um, with either, um, frames that are on place, uh, within the mortar or, uh, if we uh, tie it up to this side, we will, uh, drill into the existing concrete for an extension. Uh, so, um, because it's a significant, uh, sustained, a significant activity, uh, prepare a memory. Um, that, I'm trying to give you time to factor in that. Few other factors that get somewhere, but, um, essentially what we say is that, um, with a significant activity, we have to discuss prudent, peaceful alternatives. Uh, prudent and peaceful alternative to the walls to remove, uh, the pins and, um, remove the necessity to drill, um, into boulders and we have removed that. And the other item regarding the float, I think, was the, uh, potential of, um, sedimentation and erosion, texture launching or et cetera. Uh, we would not be launching the float until the wall was complete and stabilized. Then the float would go in, um, either over the wall or you launch it at a pretty, um, I don't know about open facilities, but a lot of people, uh, other lakes that we get involved in, uh, lock to the ramp and add a little bit and tie it off, but, uh, there's no need to have, um, uh, any erosion at this site. Site was fairly stable when we saw it. As you look down over the bank, there was no active erosion. And, um, it, uh, we agree with, um, come up, uh, with that bank and stabilize that guys with, uh, what we are proposing. Um, I guess it's a significant change. Your, yeah, it, it, it worked out good. And, uh, I do have a one by seventeen copies that puts on the board and I also have twenty-four by thirty-six if you want, if you, if you want. These are obviously to scale, these are on one scale. But we do have a graphic scale on there if you want to. This, uh, and this had the photo that we have in the upper right hand, um, corner. It's the exact same thing that you're looking at on this exhibit. And it's the same, uh, same plan that could be submitted to, uh, the town. I just highlighted the weapon, colored the wetland area and colored the um, upland view area. Let me, it's beautiful. Okay. Um, I'm gonna make sure I covered everything. Yeah, we, we, um, became involved after the, uh, wetlands application was submitted and we thought, um, we think that we have provided all the, um, uh, items covered in the application. And, um, the grants are revised. They twenty twenty-three.
Can you talk a little bit about how this is gonna get constructed? Are we using equipment? Uh, how, how, where are you excavating?
Majority of the work, uh, will be done by, actually, all the work will be done by hand. Um, as you noticed when you're at the site, uh, the site is, um, difficult to access. Um, the land itself is owned by the association. Uh, the owners are members of the association, uh, brother owner. And, um, you should certainly walk around that side and we don't propose to bring equipment in on that side and it's a lot of handwork, but it can be accomplished. Yes.
So i- is there gonna be any excavation of existing soils?
No, there, there really doesn't have to. Um, once you, uh, establish, well, let me, let me back up on it. You will maybe take off, what is that, three foot and and stockpile it above so that you have room to work to do the, uh, stonework and then you're using. Yeah, the pudding and then you use that material as you come up with your rock, you backfill it or. We'll have a, um, it, it will be a, again, mortar, uh, natural stone. Um, we're bringing the, um, travel uh, surface, bringing that down, um, along the back face of the wall. And, um, we will probably have some points where we allow the water to drain through. It should, it's a.
We pulse at the bottom.
We pulse and, and that ties to the gravel in the back. Um, we don't expect, uh, hydro, hydrostatic pressure with three V highs. Not a big deal for, I think, a stone retaining wall that we have made a provision for the rest of.
And then the gravel surface below, yeah, are you taking any soil out from there?
I'm allowed, we're essentially going to, uh, break that, uh, smooth, uh, and we don't want to change that. There's no need to change grade, uh, when you're out there, you can see that we're slightly below the sonnets. And, um, we'll be coming up near the, uh, elevation.
Well, so you're bringing more material in.
Well, oh, yeah, the gravel's, yeah, yeah. It's about a four inch. We're using two or three, three or four. Um, yeah, it'll be a, a process, uh, stone, um. Uh, uh, broken stone, maybe, uh, three quarter inch or it should have. We wanted to, um, we want a very, um. Thickness so it does, uh, mesh together and they stay.
Any initial questions from the mission?
No, that, no. The last time was the big major concern was the. Hitting that boulders.
Yeah, and, uh, cause that.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, that happened because at, at the sidewalk, we were asked that was going to be pinned. And at that time, I wasn't sure if we were going to pin it or not. Yeah, we, we might, I don't think, I don't think we're going to go, we're going to be doing Larry's very familiar, he's not here today. No, I, I. Yeah. It's well, we're not, we're not, so. It's been drilled, but, but that's okay, we, we're not, that's not part of it now. Um, it is a prudent peaceful alternative, not dependent. And so, uh, that's our proposal and we feel that, um, with that. The. In my testimony and also the, uh, narrative that we submitted, uh, I guess it's a. I shouldn't name any words, because I have to turn it here to the. Uh, yeah, okay, but it makes the requirement of the, of the rest as far as public guarantee.
So at this time, we'll open it for a public comment. So first I call anybody that would like to speak in favor of the application. I don't hear none, uh, anyone speak neutral? Okay, ask me that three times. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of you? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of you? Okay, here are none. Is there anyone that would like to speak neutral on the application? Uh, sorry, anyone that would like to speak neutral on the application, either for or against it? Yep, I'll speak louder. Anyone's wanting to speak neutral on the application? Anyone who wants to speak neutral? Okay, um, anyone that would like to speak against the application can stand up. Um, just speak your name clearly, um, for the record and then.
My name is Wes Cal.
Wes Cal, thank you.
You want to get a sign sheet, Mr. Chairman? Address, his name is address, so we know and it's on the record.
Wes, Wes Cal, twenty-seven East Shore Drive.
Yeah, your name, sir.
Do you know forty-two West Shore Drive in Connecticut? Just briefly to introduce this slide, this is the applicant's drawing. But we have just added a color and notes to make it clear. What is the meaningful, the applicant and what is David's power. So the, the yellow here is the Volta Lake Tax District right in the back. And the blue is in this case the lake and then the neighbor to the north. Oh. So. I'm Wes Cal, welcome. I'm here in several capacities. I'm president of the tax district. I'm a resident. That, uh, lives on Volta Lake. I swim and I boat on Volta Lake. I'm also a shellfish question. And I'm speaking to your wildlife and people downstream as well. The, the mission of the Clinton England Weapons Mission is three four. To protect the weapons, to ensure the natural value of the weapons for the citizens of Clinton. And to protect the citizens of Clinton from unwise development of weapons. We appreciate the opportunity to represent our mission as the Volta Lake Tax District, that we believe are goals of the segment. The applicant has been given to approve the site plan, but did not include the subject system. Did not include the subject system on the property and shows no permission for one in the future. In references existing that they're feeling, that was installed illegally. On the neighbor's property years ago. This property, where the, the property where the existing system is located, is not owned by. Or in any way controlled by the app. The applicant will not have the right to improve or repair or expand the illegally installed. Simple where it is. The illegal system. Which is, which is here on Volta Lake right. The illegal system. Has been evaluated by a fresh one here and found to be grossly. Undersemen. And as such, is destined to fail. The green, this drainage field is a dangerous potential source of contamination of our lake, our weapons. And the shellfish beds downstream. Approving this application would fly in the basic all three pillars of your. Of your vision set. I can take a question.
I, I, I don't know, I'm. Kind of shocked over there, keep going.
Okay. We're not saying that another site plan. For this property cannot be approved, only that this site plan, as it stands, is incomplete. Without demonstrating how an adequate septic field will be addressed, this application would have not satisfied the goals of your vision set. The applicant, the application should not be approved until a septic, the septic issue is resolved. And a new plan gone and presented, hold on, renewed and consideration. Others will comment on irregularities in this application and other concern. But please, uh, the inland weather condition, do not lose sight. Of the greatest source of potential weapons contamination represented for this application. The absence of an adequate service.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, sorry, guy, yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry, we're just, we're, we're just clarifying what he is going.
Okay, you just have to speak loud enough.
I'm sorry, we, we weren't having a hard conversation. I wanted to make sure what you just said. And Mike was pointing it out, like, show, I just want to make sure.
Might be know what you were just looking at.
The septic.
Okay, the leaching field.
The leaching fields.
Okay.
Just to clarify a bit more. The leaching field are here.
Right.
They don't, they've been determined to be twenty-two percent of what is required of a perimeter hall. So grossly undersized and this. This land pitches for the lake.
Right.
So, any. Failure of this system. Will run at first rain, if it's a slight failure, or if it's a great failure, it will run itself. Definitely right into. Knowing that it's undersized. It was very serious concern for us. I hope it's a concern for you as well.
My name is D M Vino and I have, uh, lived at forty-two West Shore Drive for fifty-two years. Uh, as you know, Volta Lake is a hidden gem, you saw it when you came out there. Uh, we want to keep it that way. If you look at the yellow portions, there's a lot of lines out here, there's a lot of things for walls, et cetera, and so forth. Or, uh, lines for easements. Uh, some of these things are there, but nothing has been discussed as far as. Uh, between the tax district and the applicant for, for anything changing on the property. The, uh, this writer boy. It is shown on the nineteen forty-six Volta Lake map. Uh, there's listed as the plot plan Volta Lake by Kelsey Engineering, the Town clerk's files in Clinton, Connecticut. We want you to look at the portion of the map and wait, depicting the lot at fifty-six West Shore Drive, which is the focus of the permanent four year. As you can see on this map, the septic system starts here. And I will say that this is a, this is a new tank. That was put in and the line from here goes to. Two leaching fields, the majority of which are on Volta Lake's property, a small section. And is on fifty-six. Connecticut statutes state that the septic system must be installed on the property it serves. The exception to this is that an easement can be sought by the installing party. And they're given at that time would enable him to build a system on the adjacent property. No easement was sought and none was given. This system. Was put in in two thousand and two, not this system, I'm sorry. There actually was a smaller tank here. There was a seven hundred and fifty gallon tank that was good for a one bedroom house. And on the B one hundred A application that was filled out. It was stated that nothing was going to be done to the septic system. That was on the B one hundred A. Later on, this new tank was put in, it's a thousand gallon faucet tank, I believe. And that is good for up, up to a three bedroom house. And that is the new code, okay? No easement was sought and none was given. The system was licensed by the town of Clinton. Without the requirement of property lines on the application. The system was buried without an easement or permission of any time given by the Volta Lake Tax District. It was located on the Volta Lake right away, hidden by a boat, a boat trailer and numerous generators. Owned by the owner at that time. No one knew that it was on our property.
No one saw this going on.
You know, it, it probably takes two days to do this, probably. And I can say that, uh, I live up the street, uh, two houses away, I didn't notice the, the construction. Plus. There was no line drawn. There should have been a line obtained by the installer. It's one of the minimum things that are required when you, when you get an application to put in. A system, because the state says the system has to be on the property that it serves. That's the, one of the first requisites of the septic system. That it is on the property that it serves. If you get an easement, you can put it on someone else's property. We, we were never asked for any. No easement was given, it was buried there without our permission. You, I imagine that you've seen the dome report, is, is that something that you have seen? Does Mr. Dome's, uh, report on the status of the system that is there? I'm not a civil engineer. But upon reading the report, something stood out to me in the second paragraph. The system proposed is based on an assumed percolation rate of one dash ten. If the percolation rate is actually ten to twenty, then the number of linear feet that have been proposed. Would not be satisfactory, even with the new system that he is proposing, to take care of. The leaching from those fields. If a large tub was installed in the house. Or if a, a, a ref- refuse or a garbage disposal is in the sand. You can use it, but the number goes up. And they make a special garbage disposal that injects an enzyme every time you turn it on. I have them. If the house has, uh, okay, so you, you're going to need more feeders with. The, the fact of the matter is that no perk test was done to assume, for this assumption. There's no perk test though. It was just assumed. That this would be that. So if they do the perk test and it comes out ten to twenty, aren't they going to say to us, well, we want to put more leaching fields on your property? This doesn't, this doesn't work. And I learned to never assume anything. Also, for this type of system. State requires that the system has, has a minimum of four feet of sand above ledge. According to Mr. Dome, when he dug down or his engineer dug down, the system seems to have only eighteen inches. Of sand before they hit rock. The system, Mr. Dome said, seems to be working. But there's nobody in the house. They're only there on occasion. What would happen if the three bedrooms was built? And it was being used all the time. It's grossly under, undersized, it's only a hundred and eleven linear feet. According to his calculations, uh, you need over five hundred. And without, without the one to ten drainage. You need over six hundred. And this system that he's proposing would not do that. Another thing that has been. Omitted from the B one hundred A report. And the health department keeps sticking by this, that the house is a two bedroom house. They keep, they won't change that, although they have put three bedrooms. Under approval of the work that's being done. They did nothing to, uh, change the way it had to be looked at for the increase of one bedroom. That's their criteria. They don't know where the septic system is. Also, state regulations require that new system, a new system. Cannot be installed where the old system is. There is supposed to be an area on the property, the code compliant area where a system can be installed. If me be an engineered above ground system or a holding camp can be installed. Mr. Jarra owns the lot across the street, a system can be installed there. So assets, the state requires the septic system of fifty-six West Shore Drive. To be on fifty-six West Shore Drive. The state required the system to be four feet above the ledge. The state required the system to be four feet above the ledge, not eighteen inches. The state says the system cannot be repaired in the same area. Also, public health codes forbid the effluent from leaching systems. To drain onto public land, which is what this right of way is. Is the public land of the municipality called the Boulder Lake Tax District. Thus, the proposed system on the plan that you saw earlier, embedded into this I W C. Dash twenty-three deck floor plan is not acceptable. Before you issue any permits for septic and patio walls, it would seem logical. That a septic system be installed on a property first. That is the elephant in this room. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Where you said it was three bedrooms. Where is it saying that it's three bedrooms?
Where does it say that?
Yeah.
Said that on the approval from the V one hundred A application.
Yeah.
From the health district.
Okay. All right. The assessors amount still think, I say, think too better. That's probably why they're saying. As to why they're, they're saying that it's going to be better as opposed to.
The V one hundred A.
The V one hundred A.
The V one hundred A was actually changed from non-compliant to compliant. For some reason that. We were never given a, a concise explanation for it. Any other questions? Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak against the application? Come on up. You can just, you can stand anywhere. Just state your name for the record.
Good here. You can hear me for you guys, you guys. Wherever I am on this video.
Just give your name and address.
Would you like to be in good?
So starting now, your name for the record.
I was gonna have you put my sign up, which is the one with the six poles.
And we just need your name for the record?
My name is Diana Avino. I live at forty-two West Shore Drive. Um, I, um, am a Fort Mark Clinton educator. Uh, and, uh, I have lived, um, on Boulder Lake for fifty-two years. Uh, in nineteen fifty-three, when I was five years old, I swam in this lake. So I am a caretaker of the lake. Um, second generation caretaker. Uh, the property that you saw earlier in yellow. Okay, uh, I know we're here to talk about fifty-six West Shore. And the property you saw in yellow obviously is the right of way that is right next to it. And I want to let you know that it's always been a really important right of way for the tax district. Um, and four years ago, about four years ago, things really changed in our tax district. The four people who took care of it. Okay, uh, two of them have passed.
Oh, sorry.
And one of them has moved. And Susan, uh, year born in Versant Eric, who lives across the street, have really kindred in our eyes. They're taking care of it. And we're, you know, we're all volunteers. Okay, but we're just a volunteer.
Like us.
Okay. We might think that we're all volunteers and, uh, you know, we're building an environmental. And that is what we do. We keep the water clean. With beneficial bacteria that's here to keep the water clean. We make sure the dam is solid. We just finished our seven year review. With the state of Connecticut. Uh, and the wetlands are really important to us. You know that, uh, we. Want to make sure that the animals and the fauna are there. And most importantly, we have to provide access to the people who have deed and rights. To the lake and to that right of way. Um, but tonight we're here to talk about the six poles that are in your permit. Okay, so there are six poles in the permit and the six poles are to hold up the deck. And we have some questions that we need to have answered. We want to know why the six poles. Are in this, uh, permit. And we want to know why they're in a permit where the deck has already been built. Okay, and we want to know why three of the poles. Are not on site, but they're on the Boulder Lake Tax District property. And we, so we want to know what, we just don't think about the deck that we know. The previous deck that was on in the house, okay, was built after nineteen seventy without a permit. According to the, uh, Connecticut, uh, state Connecticut building statutes, okay, that makes it illegal. Needed a permit after nineteen seventy or it was illegal. The previous deck was grandfathered in by the town, okay, without. Uh, with the, knowing it was illegal. Um, and. Honestly, if to, to grandfather it in to be repaired, okay? Honestly, the deck should have been condemned years ago. People fell through it all the time. The fact that it can be repaired, it was never going to happen, but that's the way it got grandfathered in by the town. As a side note, we want you to know that the property of fifty-six West Shore. Was incorrectly labeled by the town clerk's office. I was there every day for three weeks to find out who the owners were of this property. And it wasn't until members of the tax district saw it in the Shoreline Times. That the property was sold as fifty-six West Main Street. We went to the town clerk's office and told them. And then they changed it. Okay, so we went to them to say, you know what, you've got this under the wrong property. So they could never tell me who owned the property so we could get in touch with them. By the time we found out that the property, uh, was, uh, had sold on the wrong address. It had already been grandfathered. It had already been grandfathered in and with a remodel of the two bedroom house into a three bedroom house. Which included the repair of the existing geological bed. Um, so we wanted to do this proactively. We, we tried really hard to be on top of this before it even happened, but we couldn't because by the time we even found out. And the town changed it, it was, um, it was already done. Okay, and. We were surprised that the town didn't get in touch with us because Ronnie Vernon, who was the owner of three that, okay, um. He made it clear on the deed, property deed, that. That he had encroached on Boulder Lake Tax District property. Ronnie had moved, he was sick. You know, he told us, there were a lot of things that he had, that he had to take away. But he told us that it was, uh, encroaching on the Boulder Lake Tax District property. And we were very surprised. That everything had already been done and we had not been informed or contacted or anything like that. So this same deck, okay, that was grandfathered in to be repaired, that should have been condemned. Well, Mr. Jar, who was going to demolish it, of course he was, because no, he could have ever used it. He couldn't. Okay, so it was going to be demolished. All right. Members of the tax district took photos and they went to go see the, uh. The town, the town, uh, Abby, okay, and Richard. With photos saying, you've grandfathered in this deck that is supposed to be repaired, not being repaired, but being demolished. Okay, and it was going to be demolished and was going to be rebuilt. So they brought that with them. And then before you know it. Uh, we had them, the debt, um. Was then given a, um. A demol-, a permit to demolish it. It was given a permit to rebuild a new deck. And the owner was asked, according to when I talked to Abby and Richard, to do a property survey so they could tell where. The property line was after the demolition. So here's the question we asked the town. And a big lot of information, it's in your packet, by the way. Uh, we sent you a packet, we put together a packet, the last two or three pages are about the debt. We went to, we can't understand why after this was demolished, then redone, that they neglected to tell the owner that he should build. The debt on his property and not over the property line, onto Boulder Lake Tax District municipal property. And right now, you can see it when you look at your map that we gave you or any of the maps. If you look at the yellow. Okay, in the bottom right hand corner, okay, you will see, okay. I hear, yeah, there you go, there you go. Abby's got this. She, she knows it's in her sleeve. Okay. Uh, she, uh, that it's on our property. Okay, so. At the same time, okay, um, and if you want to go back, um. To the next slide, if you take a look at the deck, you're also going to see two things. First of all, this tree. To the Boulder Lake Tax District. And right here, you can see. Our survey markers. We've had an A two survey done and we're very confident in it. Okay, the tree belongs to the Boulder Lake Tax District, but the tree is inside the deck. Okay, so here's the thing. Um. Boulder Lake Tax District, we feel like that because the land use office. Didn't specify, but the deck had to be built inside the boundary. After they saw the property, um, uh, survey, and it was here, we have it. That you're forcing the taxpayers of the Boulder Lake Tax District to pay lawyer's fees. To do the job, but we feel that you didn't done for us by the town, our town. So that is why the six poles are so important to us in this way. If you decide that the six poles, uh, you will, if you decide that to permit the six poles. We think that you're going to be setting a precedent, that the town can take away people's property. And in this particular case. Municipal property that includes about ninety-five lots. We are ninety-five lots. Okay, that are in the town of Clinton. They pay taxes to both the town of Clinton and to the Boulder Lake Tax District. And if for some reason, you decide you want to permit, give a permit to these two companies. We want to know if you're going to send it over to the only board of appeals for various. And if not, why not? The Boulder Lake Tax District, thank you very much for letting us come and speak today. Okay. Uh, we realize we asked you a lot of questions. We don't expect you to have all the answers, which we really don't. Um, but we do want to have the answer to the public because we are the public. We. We have people come to us. We are the caretakers of all of the people in the tax district. Okay? And so again, all that we're asking you is, you know, like, we don't expect you to have all the answers, but we do ask you to hold on and not sign off on this permit. Until these questions have been answered publicly. Um. And we do ask you to read the two letters that are in the packet. We have a lot of detail in there as to why we believe the, uh. The deck is illegal and why we believe, we believe that even though they made it, it should still be built on site. It could be built all the way to the property line. We're not talking to you about setbacks with this. We're just talking about keeping on your part. And that's it. You have any questions for me?
Could I ask anything? I could ask?
Yes, you can.
Um, I'm just, I'm just curious. So I could tell you here, probably. He's on your phone.
Yeah.
Is he supposed to pay you?
Well.
I'm just.
I don't know, his lawyer, sir, maybe his lawyer will tell you what he's got to pay us. That, that, what you have, we're trying to get them to do what we think the town should do. Because you're asking the taxpayers of that, uh, of Boulder Lake to pay our lawyer to deal with. That that, that it changes the other property. Okay, that's, that's, that's where we are. Any other questions?
No, no, I think you're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this topic?
Hi, my name is, um, Lynn Jones Sample. I'm actually pleased to meet all of you. Never been to one of these meetings. We moved here just about four years ago from Pennsylvania. Um.
Oh, sorry, your address?
Sorry, thirty-seven West Shore Drive. That's my husband, Rick. I've been, uh, on Boulder Lake in the house of my dad and his brothers built in nineteen forty-six.
Wow.
Uh-huh, um, I've been there since nineteen fifty-seven. I, uh, I was going to bring you a, I'm just telling you, the first time I turned over. As a baby, your mom and I.
For an Irish spin.
Yeah, exactly. It was on the lake, it's on the sugar, it's on the lake. Anyway, the point being, long connection. Most of the time it's just summer times and of course they've got my own family. We lived all over the country. When my dad died in twenty twenty, we decided to, um. Renovate the property. We sold our house. We inherited the cottage, as we call it. It's nineteen by thirty-nine. It's probably the smallest house on the street. And we, um, renovated the whole thing. Our, um. Interest in this is that we have used the official right of way for decades. And that was thanks to the Boulder Lake Tax District, which marked the access. Uh, all volunteers came and made sure it was clear and you could drag your stuff down there. Before that, we used to have to figure out how to get the canoe, the boat, the. Um, kayaks, the various boating configurations that we moved together with rats. And we would traipse over other people's properties. Or we would put them on top of our cars and hold it tight and drive really slowly down Knod and then down Baxter to get to the lake. So the current right of way is our way of being able to access it with our rowboat, with our kayak. And be able to get to the lake. I'm setting the scene for a little bit of perspective because I've been a longtime visitor. Um, and now owner and living on the lake. Or living on the road across from the lake. And that's what I need to make clear. Because, um, we have deeded rights. Through the right of way and to the lake itself, to the beach, but we don't live on the lakeside. That is, um, made possible, the preservation of our deeded rights were made possible by the members. Of the Boulder Lake Tax District Board, Jean and Wes and Diana, who. Pay attention to what's happening for improvements. There was, I wouldn't have had a clue. I wouldn't have known, except. That we did, we walk around the lake most days. And we also care for the beach and we care for the right of ways, meaning we're out there raking up weeds along with the. Few volunteers who show up and making sure that we call them away so that they're not just washing into the lake. We're trying to make it. Um, nice. We serve on communities. We've been keenly aware of the, the, the fact that the house sold. Um, and then Mr. Vernon, who I thought only had a one bedroom house, so shows you what I am. Um, and we were aware that the new owners would kind of begin for a rude awakening when they did their, um. Got their property lines assessed or, or evaluated. Because they would realize that the fences and things were over on the, the right of right property. And we thought, oh, gosh. How are they going to deal with this? And I would have absolutely loved to have an open conversation. Rather than it turning into this. But I'm just letting you know. Um, that we really were thinking, oh, gosh, these poor people are going to be ecstatic when they find this out. Instead, the opposite happened. Their property is expanding. Um, and I, I sort of thought, wow, when we came to the cottage and wanted to include it. And make sure that we, so within the town rules, we were told we could not change one iota from the footprint. I have a thirty-nine by nineteen building. With one bedroom, which is great. I love the cottage. My point being, they were allowed to add two more bedrooms and a big huge dormer went, uh, on the top for the. Things. And all I wanted was to raise the roof five feet so that I could have an office upstairs. No. I was not allowed to. So just, you know, concerned a little bit, not your purview, I get it. But there are things that start to feel like precedence. And I'm just concerned about it as somebody who's also living on the lake going, wow, how do you get that? Because that would be really great. I'd love to have a deck. And I'd love to have a roof. So I could, I can't stand up. In the little upstairs area that we have. Um, because we had, we had designed it and paid an architect and everything so that we could have my office up there. That I have to crawl to be able to get anything that we stored upstairs. I had hoped that Mr. Jar and the Jar family, we would get to, um. Explain where the boundaries were located and discuss the tape that we put up to show. Where the, where the boundaries were. And it was very clearly delineated and people worked to make sure that the information was available. Um, I was really excited maybe that the fence would be removed that's on the property. Um, I was really excited maybe that the fence would be removed that's on the property. And I would have an easier way to drive the kayak down. Um, to the lake. My concerns now are about, uh, septic system. And if, if it fails, the effluent going into the lake, which is my lake. My, my part of ninety five more people who feel the same way. Um, I was hoping that the walls would have continued to encroach. It's, it's becoming problematic and, um. Mr. Jar really would love to be able to greet you as we head to the lake. And you're gonna say, Lynn, I'm so glad to see you bringing the kayak down. And everything has been made smooth and we have good neighbors, not more fences. I really believe, um, that we all really do care about each other. It's business personal. And I'm sorry for the, the trouble that might also be an immense result. And I guess, pretty well wrapped it up. There you go. So thanks for letting me get my two cents, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I said.
Sure. Your name and address for the record?
Oh, my name is Susan Dearborn, I have lived at forty nine West Shore Drive since nineteen ninety six. I also own the property at forty seven West Shore Drive. Which is known as a non-buildable lot due to the wetlands that run behind the non-leg side of West Shore Drive. Within this fragile wetland is the west branch of the Boulder Lake River. This area is an extremely fragile area. The applicant owns fifty three West.
So you can have to change the slide.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's a, there's another slide with three pictures. Since the applicant began construction on fifty six West Shore Drive in September of twenty twenty two. The nature and properties had to deal with this construction materials and waste going onto our properties. Multiple overflowing dumpsters have been placed on fifty six West Shore Drive. Since last dumpster removal, fifty three West Shore Drive has been used to put materials and waste on. We have had to deal with plastic containers and racks, blue styrofoam insulation. Pieces of old and new siding, food and beverage containers and pieces of broken metal and glass. Being on the Boulder Lake Tax System property and our properties. As these photos and letter demonstrate. Despite being asked to put up a silk fence multiple times around this construction areas, the applicant never gave. The construction debris that is present in this photo would have gone into the lake if it had not been picked up. By other residents, as recently as two weeks ago, I pulled three pieces of blue styrofoam insulation out of the lake in front of the applicant's property. As well as other items mentioned above in the Boulder Lake Tax District property. The wetlands to the west of West Shore Drive and Boulder Lake need to be protected from this type of environmental disregard. In the future, all construction projects of this nature need to contain silk fences and protection of the environment for the construction debris. And I did not take these pictures, um, obviously. Kathy took these pictures. But, uh, that's Kathy's letter. And that's Kathy's letter asking for silk fences and they never appeared and they never have appeared. And they still haven't. On either fifty three, where he was dumping all the stuff. Or on fifty six for properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else wanna speak against this application? Okay, I gotta say two more times, anyone else wish to speak against this application? Anyone else from the vote wish to speak against this application?
My, 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 so. Few things that would come back. Clearly, this is a lake important to. Of, uh, community, this is not a healthy community, there's no ski boats on the plate, it's people who fish out of our, you know, rowboat. And they've been looking at this thing, we've hearing people who've been looking and caring for this lake forever. Our, our passion for not seeing it contaminated is. Healthy. We are dismayed by the disingage that the health department has expressed to looking at the septic. They actually told us, tell us when it starts to ooze out of the ground and then we'll come look. The, the report, the report that you have records to. Were verified that we, was at our request. But we said we couldn't consider anything left here unless we know what it is. And the report came back saying that it was twenty two percent of. Leaching field that is necessary for a three bedroom home, which is what this figured out. The, the importance of making sure the balance between usage and seepage is, is managed. Is always. Or put it within fifty feet of a lake where people swim and fish and, and boat. And, and you've got a very serious situation. And if anyone that you catch this, it's the human weapons committee and thank you for, for hearing our, our plea. Thank you.
Very good, is there anybody on? Black screen?
I only see us as the only person right now.
Okay. Well, now move on to questions from the commission and the advocate. So I guess. Could we put up, yep, the site plan back up? Any questions from the commission?
Why was this complaint, formal complaint? Like that, that was, if we haven't seen this before. We haven't, well, we haven't seen this.
Site board, but we didn't see any of it.
But I'm saying like, why was there, why was there a complaint filed specifically about this? I mean, I know that.
And why, why didn't we get a packet that you said that they sent you guys?
So, so there's a couple, a couple of things, um, one, there wasn't complaints, Kathy didn't, went out to do inspections. One of the resolutions to those inspections was to file this application to stabilize, permanently stabilize the area. Figure out what we need to happen to make sure it was not an ongoing issue. I'll have to look at Kathy's records of the complaint file to see what happened with silk fence installation in particular. Um, and whether or not that can be transferred to the, at the base or where that, where that stood. Um, I do know that there had been communication from Kathy, uh, to the property owner relative to construction debris. I've been with building officials, had a conversation about that, um, and, and sort of push looking up along the way. So in terms of complaints and violations, those have been ongoing as a separate case.
We never received any, no, we, since they sent the packet to you guys, we, we never got that, we never had any.
A little packet we're talking about.
Our, our, so our, if you go online and put that link, we're loaded with.
What's in there?
Forty eight dollars.
I think that should be there, so that's, that's one piece of it, so there's.
There's a lot of correspondence to me.
But then the other piece with the septic.
Yeah, so let me, I'm, I'll get to each one of those things, so, so that's, that's that part of it. The septic piece, so there's, there's two pieces at play here. One is a jurisdictional issue with what zoning and wetlands can and cannot touch based on the fact that the septic. Compliance, design and compliance is part of the public health code that is managed by the Connecticut River Area Health District. There isn't, it, it's not the subject of this application, I absolutely hear and understand the concerns of the residents. Of the Boulder Lake Tax, Tax District and, and their, their concern about that, but it's not a jurisdictional issue that we can enforce on. Or, or deliberate on because it's not within the code that you are obligated to fully follow. It's also not in the zoning code. And so I think it's important to know that, so, so when it comes to things happening through land use office, CRAD is. The, the, the legal body that is assigned with those things.
There is.
The other piece of it, I think that's, so, so in, in the wetlands. If there were to be a failure of a system and there were evidence of a violation and impact to wetlands, then you have authority. That's not an authority that we have today. And so I think that's, that's an important piece, like it or not, that is the law and that's where we're sort of like working with it that, so.
Here's another question, no, what about the, um, zoning, not that this is our perky call. But the zoning issue with the assessors now, um, on, um, you know, vision saying that there's two bedrooms.
So a couple of different things, one, the final status of what's in the vision piece of the assessors is done for the final certificate of occupancy. So I have to go back and see whether or not that occupancy is ranked by the building official, I'm not entirely sure where that stands. So that's one, um, so, so that's, that's where that information comes from. And then keep in mind that, that, that information also freezes on an annual basis for them to do their assessment and updates. So, uh, so we can certainly look into the current status, but, um, you know, the permitting for the septic. For whatever number of bedrooms at whatever capacity is done through CRAD. And then through the certificate of occupancy for building permits and otherwise, that gets passed on to the assessor and the assessor then updates their records. So, so it may be an overlap, it may be that there really are only two bedrooms, it may be that there are three and it hasn't worn its way into. The public facing record of the property yet, so all of those things could be going on. Um, relative to the, the deck, because there's been a lot of, of back and forth on, on the deck, um. Over a long period of time, certain, since about the day we were shut our office down here, um. We have consulted multiple times, and so Kathy is the zoning enforcement officer, it is her role to sign off on the building from its relative to zoning compliance. For structures as part of the building from an application. A building application was received to replace in kind the deck. So that's the, so maybe the issue here is, is not just making minor repairs. The deck was determined to be a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And I understand that the residents of the district do not, or at least certain residents of the district do not agree with that status and will, I'm sure. Wish to say something about that and have certainly made their position clear in terms of the office. We have spent extensive time consulting with the town attorney on this matter and it's been very clear that, that the. This footprint of the debt is the footprint of the debt and the ownership issues and, and claims on the other side. Is a private property issue, it's not something that Kathy's zoning enforcement officer has the authority to make a determination on relative to the. The property line and who has what because of, because of the pre-existing non-conforming status. If this were a brand new deck, if there hadn't been one there before and they wanted to build something tomorrow, it would have to be zoning compliant, there's no question. But that's not the set, was not the history or status of this particular structure, which I believe we heard from one of the, the, the members, the, the folks who spoke, um. Goes back to about nineteen seventy, so it's been there for a very long time, it's not the town that issued last, a year, year and a half. So that's, that's, that's what I need, so, private property issues are not the jurisdiction of the town to resolve. Um, the septic pieces are a CRAD issue and I know that there's ongoing conversation with the region, with the health district and brothers for that. It's not something that the land use office, we can come to resolution of, it's not ours to touch. Um, unless there were a problem, where in the land, you're getting all of this exclusion issue was identifiable to this, so. Same thing with the deck, um, there's been a lot of hesitation with the town determining on this and then giving summary where that stands.
We asked you to the deck.
And it's not the subject of the question.
Uh, only because it was brought up.
Go ahead, say your name for the record, go ahead, just say your name again for the record.
You know.
Yeah.
Um, the deck was built sometime between nineteen seventy and nineteen eighty. It researched in the town hall, there was no deck on the assessment in seventeen, there was a deck in nineteen eighty. We could not find a building permit for the deck. So the deck was put up without a building permit.
Sure. Yeah.
That means that, that, that deck was illegal. Was illegal.
And I don't, I don't think it's necessarily worthwhile to get into the back end.
Yeah.
The state of Connecticut, every structure that is put up. Pastel house needs a building permit.
Right, that's, that's a point of the.
I understand that, but she brought up the deck and the fact that.
That has to do with us.
Okay.
I'm not clear.
We're, we're dealing, we're, everything that we deal with the town goes to the lawyer from the town. Our letters don't go to any place anymore.
Abby here is.
Okay.
A lot of stuff, she's our, uh, manager, I mean, that's. Don't care, so.
Someplace, someplace in this system. I like Mr. Jar, he's been given information and I think he's been given bad information and stuff.
Well, I, I.
Well, do you respect?
Okay.
Yeah, we're no bad report, um, okay. So, commission, good questions, um. So we have a B one hundred A approval for this application though, right? Because it meets the setback requirements from many work.
Correct, for the subject of this application, every one hundred.
Okay, um, I guess my question is, so with the septic, obviously over the property line at some point. I'm sure it needs to be replaced, but no septic's willing. Um, is any of the work that is gonna be done under this application gonna preclude? The homeowner from replacing the septic and putting it onto their property? So it looks like you're putting a gravel lot. Kind of in the only spot in the open area in the front of your property as part of this application?
I can answer, I'm, 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 uh, attorney for, uh, Jensen and Mercy Jar with property owners. Um, no, I think that's what the B F one hundred A. Um, that was recently approved as part of this application process. Uh, reveal was that, um, by doing these improvements, we weren't, uh, diminishing the repair area, which is the consideration.
Okay. So that, if, if that septic needs to be replaced in the future. None of the improvements that you have under this application would preclude its placement at that.
That's correct.
On, on that property? On that site?
On one, on their site.
On their property?
Yes.
Right.
Um, any questions?
So, yeah, so you're asking basically down the road, they have to replace this septic system. Are they able to even move the leaching fields on their property where they belong, is that possible too?
Well, so I didn't ask for that.
Okay, now I'm asking that.
I'll, I'll answer that, again, and to sell, um, this obviously has, uh. A, a few issues that go well beyond the jurisdiction of this commission. Um, the septic system was put in, in two thousand two, it was fully permitted when it was put in, it was put in by your. Uh, and Bob Dome, as, as you see in the correspondence from him, it could update the septic system, so we.
Probably twenty.
Can all assume.
It was.
Your assumptions, two thousand two.
Two thousand two.
Yeah, we can all assume it's probably better than most of the other septic systems that are around the lake, but. The, the, you know, this is an interesting issue and an interesting question, I again go well beyond anything that this commission needs. The septic system's been in there for twenty one years, there's been a fence around it, so. Whether you can replace it in that location or not, which is what Mr. Dome has advised when that's necessary. We hope to resolve this with association, we've met with the association multiple times.
Because I said, do what I said.
Yeah, but it, you know, just as, as, as I believe Mr. Kavanaugh said. We provided a report at their request in order to try to work these things out. So we continue to want to work this out, but their answer is, sorry, no, sorry, no, sorry, no. That's, you know, so it's, it's hard to work things out when that's the attitude on the other side, so.
Yeah.
Uh, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. I need a, sorry, we can only have one conversation at a time.
Thank you.
So, uh, 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 the septic system goes beyond the scope of this jurisdiction, but it's, what's installed in two thousand two is a newer septic system. Installed by your, you know exactly what it is, dug it up, we inspected it, them present. Um, hopefully we can resolve this so that there's a long-term solution. We all, I think we can all assume again, why it was put there, because the rest of the property is ledge. So finding a spot on the property that has four feet.
Well, twenty, yeah, twenty years ago, that's what they had to do, but.
That's what they had to, Mr. Mr. Jar dug a new water line onto the property and had to. Blast the entire trench.
Right.
In order to just get a water line from the river.
I understand.
So, you know, there, there's, there's a common sense approach to this, but. Um, um, from a wetlands commission, what we're talking about is the, the retaining walls, the gravel. You know, and I think that one of the key components here is Mr. Jar and his family use and swim in this lake. Right, like, the last thing he wants to do is contaminate the lake with septic. This, this is their home, this is, this is the property that they use. So we're all on the same page when it comes to protecting the lake and, you know, hopefully we can. Get back on the same page.
Just out of curiosity, have you approached the association for getting an easement?
Yeah, we, we're in discussion, but that's. I, so I, I can't, I can't take any more discussion from the. I'm sorry, we can't take any more discussion, it's, it's, uh, we're open just for commission discussion right now. Any questions?
No, my, my concerns were addressed about drilling the rock. My, you know, we're all concerned about that, I wasn't gonna allow that, I wasn't gonna vote. My, you know, we're all concerned about that. I wasn't gonna allow that. I wasn't gonna vote for, um. Not gonna, you know, not because it would have destroyed the. The beautiful lake, you know, it was rocks, it was rocks here. I've been in like four homes out there, you know, and, uh. The, the beautiful rock, you know, it's lagered room, you know, it's, 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 um, so it is, it's a hidden treasure. Now that I know you have shellfish.
Down.
I'm gonna be a friend. No, so, um, it's, it's, uh, it is a hidden treasure and I, I see. You know, and that, we just want to do the right thing. We're, that's why we're on the weapons. We, we want to protect. Everything that you said is what we want to do. Well, right now, the other thing that you guys have brought up is like our chairman said, we are in. That's how I heard. Planning zoning, you know, some of that stuff, you know, and Abby.
And cred.
And cred, cred.
Things we can.
But that comes, I'm on the plan to zoning, so they. I know those, I know our limitations. It's a different. How an environment was like, we, I want to, we want to take care of our property. We want to take care of our. Power, you know. And she, you know, she's right. There's, there's different things. It's a whole different.
So any questions? I, so I, I do have two. Um, can you physically show us? How they're gonna get all that stone in the back? To the back of the property? I guess I, I can't understand because there's a deck. On the left side, are they going to go around the right side? With wheelbarrows or how are they physically going to get stone?
Yeah, the, the property to the left is a, a right way. Mister Jar is a member of the right way.
So, because it's four feet. So the plan is to wheelbarrow it around the house and then. Over, okay. Um, and then the second one. You're looking at the north part of your property. You show two stone walls. On, it looks like either side of the driveway. But that you have those stone walls protruding outside the property line? So is that, whose property is on the other side that you're planning with?
That's the town, right? That's where, where, right, everybody. Yeah.
So you're proposing work on towns and property? So we'd like. Anybody who. Builds an entrance to their. Um, or enhances their driveway apron. That's on town property.
So then would you gain more employment permits granted or the commission, should you consider approval of the application condition it? On either getting the appropriate permits or moving that to implement each batch of property?
Got it. Yeah, okay. So that's gotta be approved by the town of Clint.
We have to start. Someone has.
Got it. Okay. So you haven't approached the town about.
Right.
Anyway, inside there right away.
Like a state highway, you know, get the town approval. And then you go to the state with what you want to do within. So we would have to go back to the select.
Okay.
We don't have to wait for a good morning.
It would, it would be.
Town guy.
It would go to the Department of Public Works for.
Public Works, yeah. Okay.
We were hoping you could ask a question about the patio. The glory who owns the property next door is very safe. She's not here tonight. And the patio is on there. Nobody has said anything about it. It goes right up to the.
Okay, I, 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 I know, I know. We're, we're still in discussion phase. Um.
It is what he does.
So the parking gravel area that's for the driveway, can, can you show me what those limits are? There's really like no shape. And how is it bigger than what is existing?
Yeah. Um, together, I'm gonna bring it's, it's something between these two walls. And it comes down to this. Area that almost occupies the old edge of pavement, but then it widens out. So that they have a larger, um, park.
So what's on the left side of that? Is that going to be grass or?
Left, left maybe.
The left side of the driveway? Yeah, what you're not.
That, that would be a grass area.
Okay, so you're expanding the existing gravel area?
Yeah, we're taking, we're getting rid of the pavement. Um, most of that's been removed by now. And, and we're going to expand the gravel.
So like as far as runoff. During a heavy storm event, where's that water gonna go?
Actually, it would, it would just, um. We're not changing the target of it. And it would be the same, uh, direction that flows towards the lake. That's the forty-eight, uh, there would be a forty-six contour, uh, wraps around. And close to this general. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, but your question is this, is it, I looked at that, it goes through the cellar. The rock is.
Wow.
It's true. Some of it, um, on this side, um, where the forty-eight, uh, contour comes in. Um, it, it drops down, uh, through the basement. It's a walkout base. And then that runs out. This is all a rock ledge. And then you receive water, you can see water coming over that. Yeah, and watch, and watch it. So that comes out and that goes into. That went into the left, yeah.
So is there any? Yeah, so, okay, so you're having additional impervious area. Is there? Any negative impacts by increasing flow and directing it through the house or on to?
Well, we, we would be. Changing the flow characteristics by adding.
Patterns, no, but.
By.
Longing, yes.
Not necessarily, uh, because we're taking away the. We're removing paved area and putting in some impervious surface.
So it's paved now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It was created to. Yeah. We're, we're. Improving it if you will, but.
You have a, but showing removal of. Impervious.
Yeah.
Or less impervious.
This is, well, we show the end pavement. And we show the, um, post gravel parking area.
Yes, but like, so if you're doing a land cover, volume runoff calculation, are you increasing runoff that by? Are you, so you're decreasing? You're changing.
And that change is to, yes, we're reducing the impervious cover on the lot.
So we're, you're reducing impervious cover on the lot?
Yes.
So you're counting gravel as. Incurr- uh, purpose. Purpose, I'm sorry, purpose. Yeah, okay.
We're reducing the incurvous area of the lot.
Anyway, my line of questioning is, is are you making, are you going to be adding any additional flow? To the. Property to the left side by doing any of the improvements?
No.
Okay.
Did he answer your question? I, I missed it about the stone wall that's, um.
They would be required to get.
Oh, we had to go to the.
Permit from the town.
From here to here, that activity has to be approved by the town. Because it's part of the town.
Which can be a condition of our permission we want it is before you do any work, you have to get people from the town to say. Should it?
Yes, sure.
Um.
And upgrade that, that map showing the purvis. The impervious. Uh, interview to purvis. Right. Before the gravel park. It, um. Maximum impervious coverage, you're allowed twenty percent. We're at thirty, twenty-four percent and that's why I'm down to thirty percent.
Okay.
That, the house, that can't see it from here. From me, the, that's just for the structure, the original structure.
Oh, it's.
So we, we, we can't have back and forth between the audiences.
I don't know.
I, I know, I know.
I should respond to some of your plans.
Okay, um. And then the stone paper patio that's going to the. So east side.
Yep.
Uh, are you changing any grades there? Or are you going to be, because it looks to be right on the property line. Are you doing any grading on to that adjacent property? Um.
It's going, there's, there's some ledge on this side. And we're going to be playing it up against, um, the rock. I just, um, because as I mentioned in my opening statements. Um, the application was submitted. And, um. We. Drew the plan the best we could to, uh, agree with the application. The intent is to go from this edge of the walkway that comes in the back. And go to the, um, exposed rock. It's not going to be exactly. Rectangular, if you will. It's going to blend into the rock. It's like the, um, you know, the rock that's in the basement. Go into the basement and everything's drilled up to the rock and it, and it bends around. It's going to be the look that's going to be on here too because. This whole, you know, there's exposed rock along that side of the. Of a lot, this exposed product, we have wedge coming up. All over the place.
Do you need to excavate any material to put that in?
No, it wouldn't be, uh, excavating. It would be, well, we would do the, the base for it, but as an exchange of materials. So.
So like when you, so when you pull out topsoil or whatever land cover is there, where do you put that?
We remove it from the site.
Okay. And then I, I do have one question and then I'll get it to you guys, like hijacking this. Um. The work underneath the deck, so it's obvious that the deck. Encroaches over the property line. What your work is going to be on your side of the property line, you know, how do you, and you're covering it with gravel. How do you keep? Material from working its way off your property and onto. The border lake district.
We could do a. Um, the, the difference in the. Um. Property lines. Was, was brought up and mentioned. I was going to touch on it because I didn't feel it was pertinent to this commission. Um. And I have attempted several times to get a copy of their survey. And it has yet to be provided to me. And it was this recent as today I spoke again with all the associates to get a copy. And when I left the office at six, it was not there yet. And, um, they told me. Um, I called them for the third, whatever, last week and they said that they have to get admission from the association, which is true. You know, we do that with our. Um, but I have yet to receive it. I don't know. If there is a discrepancy or not. I'm a licensed land surveyor. Um, I provide, um, this survey that was prepared by a licensed land surveyor. And we use that information to prepare our site. I have yet to receive anything that tells me otherwise. If they have it, they haven't provided. Um, so. But to answer your question. If there is a problem with the lot, we will do an edging. Uh, be it, um. At some stage, a pressure treated, um, or to contain, uh, the. Uh, gravel. We want to do four inches, it's a loose material and we go, uh, and find it on the property line. According.
So I think that is important is keeping, because your work goes right up to that line.
Oh, I understand.
And just making sure that your improvements stay on your, your.
Yep, yep. And we, we intend to be, to do that. Um. It, uh, now we've been. Um. Trying to get the information, you know.
So that's something that needs to be resolved, but not in this environment. I, so I, I would like to see, like, if you're going to be using, uh, you know. Like wood to put that on for the site plan?
Okay.
Any, any kind of improvement like that, that you're, you're going to be using to keep your work on your property should be.
Yeah, it's like we would, obviously, um, it, it may be a timber, um, so that it's more of a step. Uh, we don't want to make a trip hazard, um, throughout this, um, property. And so it would probably be an eight by eight timber that you would put along the. And that would be your property. Not pressure treated. Probably. Don't go there. We use pressure treated now for docks and pilings and everything. And it's permitted and it's a different. It's, it's not the arsenic that, uh, we just. And I've been doing this a while.
There any other questions? Questions, Bert?
I had a few, but then, um, I think they've been taken care of.
Okay. There's no other questions from the commission. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I agree to motion to close.
A second. Any, any discussion? Who's the thing? Hold it's voting in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any on the stage? Okay, so public hearing is not closed?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Okay, so moving to item agenda number six, administrative review. So this is now the review of application I W C twenty-three dot four fifty-six west floor drive. Jensen Jar is the applicant owner. Scrap patient for regular activities within zero feet, two hundred feet is many mountains or water course. Uh, sets with map fourteen, block four, lot fourteen in the zone R thirty. And since we. Close the public hearing, it is eligible for a decision tonight. But I would recommend, since we got a lot of stuff, there's forty-three files. That we, uh, table to till next meeting so that we get an opportunity to review everything in the file. And then come back and we can make a determination next month.
Yes, sir.
Everyone could.
I agree.
At, that, that fair? Okay, so I'll take a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to tables. Is it the, I, I. Twenty-three dot four or twenty?
Twenty-three dash four.
Yep. Uh, no, okay. Uh, I W B C twenty-three dash four, table.
Thank you, I have a second. Florio seconds, any discussion?
We just want to review it.
Okay. Hold the vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thing, damn, those are serious. So we tabled the decision on the application till next month. It'll give a, an opportunity to review everything that's in the file and then we'll, we can be next month and then.
Can I ask you? Uh, sure. So then what I have to review, you guys want to, uh, to. Preview what? All, all the things that were submitted online.
Yep, so there's forty-three, uh, forty-two items in the file. Um, so it's everything from your application to your site plan. To the reports that have been submitted as well as the correspondence, um, from the public hearing.
Okay, so that's part of what we are looking forward to.
We look at everything. So we'll just review everything that's in the file. We'll compare it to our regulations and then we come back and we'll deliberate. Um, at next meeting and then make it.
Great, thank you very.
Great, thank you for everybody. Okay. On to item sixty, staff reports.
No, we, we heard that we just, are they, the, uh, engineer for the violation and fifteen doctor has just gotten permission to, uh, an authorization to start. Be as built for the wood chipper rule on the piece. That was last piece of compliance before being able to close that violation. So. My understanding is that by the October meeting, we should expect that to be enhanced, but they had like. So for the other violation of zero plane, Bob just let me know that he has also just been offered as to do the eyes built for that property as well. So. So by the October meeting, we should see actual documents and, and be able to.
Uh, item agenda number seven, correspondence. I don't believe there is any new correspondence for this month. Item agenda number eight, old business. I don't think we have any. Item agenda number nine, new business. So. Um, item agenda ten, additions to next month's regular meeting. So anything that we want to add to our agenda? So. My agenda number eleven, chair's comments. I don't really have any comments other than it's just review everything in the application.
And there's a tactic, Mr. Chairman, I think it's all.
It's all. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. And any style, so if they just say aye.
I, I understand.
Thanks. I think it's staying in place, thank you to everybody.
Yes, that's definitely, I want to get around this plus for all the wood chips to be done.